Yeah, I will share my screen for the.
Okay, we'll call Luke Mead in to order. When we get the flag up, we'll do the pledge.
Okay.
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Into the Republic.
Which stands, one nation. Thank you.
See, I might need to mute myself there.
Do we have?
You should be able to mute yourself.
Do we have any comments on agenda items? Anyone wants to make a comment, name in their chat?
The chat box is open if anybody has a comment.
There's the instructions.
There's nothing in the chat box at this time.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the approval of minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the May 14 minutes?
Functional approval, Phil.
Okay, you second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any discussion? Okay, Carolyn, are you able to do a roll call?
I don't think that she is, Bill, or Phil.
Okay. I can do that then. Ms. Arnold? Holly? You're unmuted, Holly.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Ms. Gregory?
Yes.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Mr. Farr, myself, yes. Thank you. Next, we have business and finance reports, one through six. Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve one through six.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I, Phil, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, looking over the balances on some of the classes on page 21, is there something being worked on for the class of 2020? Simply because they raised so much money, there's over $24,000, and there's no prom, there's really nothing that's going to be happening for them. Are we working on a plan for this amount of some kind?
Well, I believe that would be up to the class to decide what to do with the money.
Okay.
I don't know if Mr. Bossers had any discussions with the class or not.
Okay.
I would think that when their officers are able to get together, that they may be discussing that.
Okay.
They use for the all-night party and the prom.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Okay, roll call. Ms. Arnold?
Yes.
Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Ms. Gregory?
Yes.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
No.
And myself, who read it. Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Heather?
Okay, I have, I'm going to share my screen again, and I have a really brief update for you. So those of you that watched my video last night, some of this is going to be repetitive information, but our final days of instruction is Friday, May 29th for seniors and Wednesday, June 3rd for kindergarten through 11. I'm not sure. You guys can't see this, is what Mary Jean's telling me.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. All right.
That was a great video, Heather.
Thank you. Um, let's see how I need to do this. Share. There we go. Now you see it?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
All right. Sorry. As I have said before, you would think I would be a lot better at this, since I spent all day on it. Okay, so final days of instruction, 29th for the seniors and June 3rd K-11. That doesn't mean that teachers won't be online and working with kids, but we need to cut off the grade somewhere, and so that's, those are going to be the days to do it. We are going to offer some, some students who need it, summer school and credit recovery, we will offer it free of charge this year in that the situation was what it was. And because of the closure, this is just a handful of kids that may or may not take advantage of that opportunity. The device return, again, those of you that watched my video last night know that our plan next year is to go one-to-one. So it becomes critical that we get the devices back that we loaned out so we can get them cleaned up and the hard drives wiped, et cetera. So we're going to start that on Monday, June 8th, but that'll be a process and there'll be many opportunities to drop stuff off. We'll communicate that out to the parents. Classroom cleaning has started, so we brought back in our custodial staff. Our maintenance staff has reappeared, and they are helping teachers in small numbers clean out their classrooms. And I want to compliment the teachers. What I'm hearing from the administrators is that they have really tried to minimize what they're leaving in their rooms, and I really greatly appreciate that. The message from the superintendent, if you haven't watched it and you're interested in watching it, you can go to www.tasd.net, and if you look in the top red bar, it'll say a video message from the superintendent, and it'll have a Loom link on it, and that is, that is the video. So anyone that hasn't watched that yet, I welcome you to do it. So here's the big news. The board has directed us to schedule a graduation for June 19th, 2020. So we want everybody to save the date. I'm not really sure what this is going to look like yet. I don't have the details hammered out. A lot is going to depend on where we are in June 12th in terms of the recommendations and the restrictions for green. We anticipate that we may be in the green area by that time, and, but what graduation is going to look like, I can't give you the nitty-gritty yet. But save the date. Whether we have to do it video-wise or whether we can actually do an in-person graduation, it will be on June 19th. So that's exciting news. So seniors, we promise we will celebrate you.
And the main day is the following day?
Yes, the 20th. So I just want to conclude by giving a shout out to our teachers and to my administrators and to our related services. I have had numerous Zoom sessions with these folks this week, and they are working so hard on lifting this off the ground. I, their enthusiasm, their momentum, it's inspiring, and I could not be more grateful. So I just want to thank them and tell everybody how lucky you are to have your kids in Toncanic, because quite frankly, I've never worked with a staff who is more capable, more talented, and more motivated. So they love your kids, and they're going to do the very, very best for them. So shout out to all of you. Thank you. That is all I have. Till we get to the calendar. Yeah.
Do we have any committee meetings? I don't recall.
Phil, I'd like to, I spoke to Mr. Bosser, and I have been receiving a lot of phone calls about extracurricular activities going into the summer. I think it's a good idea that we try to schedule an extracurricular meeting. I don't know if Mr. Bosser's on, but I was going to propose some possible dates.
He is.
I know Rob, Rob Perry, myself, and Lori Bennett are the, on the committee. And I know Rob, Rob's not here, so.
Mr. Bosser, you're unmuted.
Good, thank you.
Todd, I know we spoke about trying to sit down, at least with the current rules and regulations and where we're at and maybe where we're going, just to kind of give a, an outline of what we could do going into the summer with our extracurricular activity kids and coaches.
Yes.
Lori, are you there?
Yep.
Wednesday, I was looking at maybe Wednesday or Thursday of next week?
Okay.
Yep, either one.
Todd, is that okay on your schedule? I don't know, with, with school coming at a close, I don't want to throw a monkey wrench into your busy schedule.
Wednesday or Thursday evening is fine.
I'm good either day.
Let's go ahead and set it up then for Wednesday. Would 6 o'clock work?
Yep.
Yes.
And I'm, I'm going to, I assume it's going to be a Zoom. And maybe Todd and Lori and Rob, maybe we could try to maybe in some way physically sit down and be part of the Zoom. If not, we'll just all do it remotely. And I think, Todd, what we could do is you and I can just work on an agenda going into that meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
So we're good, and I'll, I'll reach out to Mr. Perry and let him know 6 o'clock next Wednesday.
In addition to that, I think Shane wanted to schedule a building and grounds meeting as well.
That's correct. So for those of you who are part of building and grounds, if you look ahead to your schedule next week, is there a particular day? I'm going to suggest either possibly Wednesday or Thursday. Tuesday is a possibility as well.
Shane, I would, I would prefer Tuesday if that's, okay?
I'm okay with Tuesday.
Tuesday works for me.
Tuesday works. I think Shayna was saying something. Shayna?
Tuesday the second?
Yes, Tuesday is the second, Bill.
That's Election Day.
That's right.
Okay.
It's primary election day. That's probably not a good time.
Are any of you, would you be unable to attend because of commitments related to Election Day? I mean, I don't anticipate that we need more than a half hour, 45 minutes, but we do have some items that we need to work through.
I'm available whenever.
Okay. Bill, I'd like to go ahead and try and schedule it for Tuesday unless, you know, we have people who are, you know, whole participants that would be unable to attend due to previous commitments.
Can we do it later in the evening? Because this is the earliest. I've got off work all week so far.
Okay, um, I guess we need to discuss like what that would look like. So are you suggesting 8 o'clock? Because that's probably getting a little late.
7:30 or so, 7, 7:30?
If we're doing it as a Zoom call, that's fine. I think we can manage 7:30.
Oh, you don't want to try to meet in person now that we're in yellow?
No, we haven't been, you know, the part of the yellow guidelines is that teleworking is still encouraged for people who have the flexibility to do that. So for the time being, we'll continue with Zoom meetings. So we'll plan for Tuesday at 7:30, and we'll do a Zoom call for building and grounds?
Okay.
Yep, good.
Okay. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, we'll go, move on to unfinished business. And we have the school calendar, Heather.
Okay, so I got to share my screen again. Here we go. This was the calendar that I presented for your review at the last meeting. I had sent it out to you guys earlier this week. It brings the teachers back in on the 17th of August. The children would start back on the 24th of August, and we would finish on May 28th. Again, if, if we're approved.
Need a feedback.
I think it's somebody's pager. If we, if we were approved for the flexible instruction days, and we have all of our curriculum up online, I don't believe that there will be a circumstance in which we would use a snow day. So I think that, you know, this calendar is, it's pretty, it's pretty lean, but it keeps us in here just about every day, so.
Heather, is there, is there, I'm sorry, is there a maximum on those remote days?
You know, there is, Bill, right now. There's, it's five. But I would not be surprised if that's, if that's changed.
Okay.
To 10.
Okay, do we need to schedule a time to adopt the calendar? Or do we want to consider it tonight? I mean, time for this unfinished business tonight.
I would make a motion to approve it tonight.
Yep. Phil, I just, I just say, obviously, there are things that are still changing, and obviously, we could change this at any point in the future if we had to.
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Heather, when did you say graduation would be next year?
Well, the last day of school, Lori, would be the 28th of May.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay.
So we have a motion by Holly to adopt the calendar. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Any discussion?
Heather, I thought you did a really nice job putting this calendar together, so I'm sure it was you with some inputs from some other folks. I think it does a good job of getting people back at the beginning. I think there will be a ton of work that will have to get done, so I like having those days at the beginning. It also gives the flexibility if we have to interrupt education for, you know, let's hope we don't have to do it for a couple of weeks, but if we did, that early out is a big help there. And we have some very nice breaks built in for families to plan vacations between the Christmas holiday, the Easter holiday that's available. So I think there's some really good things there. Thank you.
And I want to thank TAEA for their input as well.
Always a lot of work and thought to put in the calendar. Anybody else? Okay, we do a roll call? Pardon me?
What was the last day again?
May 28th, Bill.
May 8th, okay.
Anybody else have anything? Questions? Okay, we do a roll call. Ms. Arnold?
Yes.
Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Ms. Gregory?
Yes.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
No.
Mr. Farr, myself, yes. Okay, the next item on the unfinished business is the discussion of the 2021 school budget.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Can you see a PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
It's up there.
All right, so we are back to kind of provide an update on the proposed budget for 2021. We have done this over a series of meetings over the last several weeks, and I just would like to take this opportunity to share some new information with the board and with the public and just talk about what the next steps look like. So we've shared this each of the times we've discussed the budget process to educate everyone around the timeline. There are requirements that we must meet that are put forth by the Department of Education. We did our, we adopted the proposed final budget on April 23rd. We've had, this will be the second meeting since that time where we are providing updates with our objective to approve the final budget on June 11th. So PDE's requirement is that the final budget is adopted no later than June 30th. So June 11th certainly does give us some time. I've also shared this slide. So as of April 23rd, when we passed the initial proposed budget for 2021, we had initially proposed expenses of $50,536,000 with an initial projected revenue of $48,171,000. What the chart below that shows is a breakdown of what we deem to be fixed expenses. Those are expenses that the district incurs and has very little flexibility to make changes to on a year-by-year basis. Most of those are items that are contractually bound or are items that we are locked into like debt service, and we have very little room to look to those areas as sources of savings. So what that leaves us with is a relatively small chunk of the budget for us to be able to look at savings opportunities. So we have done some work since the initial discussion on April 23rd. So at this point in time, this is a summary of some of the expense adjustments that have been made since our original discussion. So since April 23rd, we have made the decision to not backfill some open positions. So these are positions that either have been, become open as a result of retirement or were open when schools closed at the time in March. The total of those positions is about $500,000. We have also made the decision to defer spending or find alternate funding sources for a number of projects and opportunities across the district to the tune of about $268,000. I'm not going to go through each of those. I'll let you take a moment to look at them. What we've tried to do is find elements of the budget which were not essential, not required by law, where we felt like when we looked at our historical actual trends, we felt like we had room to make adjustments. So, you know, when we've taken reductions, it's based on data that we feel is valid and will hold true as we head into the 2021 year. We've also fortunately been able to make some healthcare adjustments. That is the result of our healthcare premiums coming in below what was originally forecast in the original proposed budget, so that's good. So we have more accurate data now, and we do not anticipate as big of an increase as what we originally had in there. We also receive healthcare premium credit, and the combination of those two things allows us to adjust the budget. We've now added the bond, so we are moving forward with the issuance of the bond for the roof projects as well as a number of other capital projects throughout the district. And in year one, we will have debt service of approximately $100,000, so we've added that in. And we've also gotten some more accurate data regarding transportation expenses. So each year, the state formula is adjusted for the Consumer Price Index, and this year's adjustment will result in an increase of about $55,000 across our contracts. So the total, when you look at both the gives and the takes, is a $715,000 reduction relative to the approximately $50 million that we had in the original proposed. So just to kind of show you the quick math, we're currently now at $49,821,000 for budgeted expenses. Our budgeted revenue has fluctuated a little. You will continue to see that needle move a little bit between now and when we pass the final budget. There, there's a number of factors that contribute to that, but there have been some minor adjustments there. That puts us at a deficit of $1,695,000. So as we talked about in previous meetings, we are estimating that we will end this year with a general fund balance of about $4 million. And so when you look at where we would then be at the conclusion of the 2021 school year, we would have an ending general fund balance of $2,304,000. So certainly, the deficit that we currently have will cut into the general fund balance, but at this point in time, we feel that that is a reasonable position going into the approval portion for the 2021 year.
But that is pretty skinny, and I believe you sent a memo out to us that the bond rating agencies are noting that, and that's not a positive, so.
That's correct. I mean, so I think that's a good point that Phil makes. So as we're going through the bond rating process, one of the factors that the analyst looks at when they rate the district's position is our fund balance. So, you know, we've had a lot of conversations about the fund balance and the need to maintain a solid fund balance. I mean, clearly, through my conversations with the analysts, you know, they're looking at a district to have in the 8% to 10% of their total expenses in their general fund. So while I do think it represents a risk, the positive side is that we do not currently have a large debt load relative to many districts out there. And so I think that that's a good offsetting factor, but I think that that's a really good point. So at this point in time, you know, we are awaiting the final rating, but it's certainly a factor that they pointed out that's something that we want to watch for down the road.
I guess the next two years would be the, are concerned, because then our debt service drops off considerably, as John pointed out many times.
That's correct. So into that '22, '23 fiscal year is when the 2015 bond will be matured, fully matured, and that certainly will reduce our annual debt service obligation significantly and will be a help to the district. So our objective is to run lean and to do the best we can the next few years to manage a very tight and strict budget. Okay? So let's just talk a little bit more about the revenue projections, because over the last few weeks, you know, we certainly have shared that the COVID-19-related closures that have happened in our communities are anticipated to have an impact on the revenue side of the equation. So PASBO is the state organization for business officials, and they have done some modeling. And there is certainly some projections that would show that the district could, and I use this term, you know, I really want to emphasize this, could see a potential loss of $1.5 to $1.8 million on the local revenue side. So since this original projection came out, there's a couple of things that I would just like to share. One is that we got word this week that the state budget is moving forward. So the initial state budget has been passed in the House, and it is a 12-month funded budget for basic ed and for special education funding. So that is good news. So there was some, were some concerns that they were only going to formally pass a budget for five or six months, but they made the decision for the education portion, specifically basic ed funding, special ed funding, that those would be a 12-month budget, and they have in that budget that they will be level funded, which means that at this point in time, they are saying that we will receive the same funding that we did for 1920, which is good news. So as of right now, they are not projecting any reduction in basic ed or in special ed funding for 1920 at the state level. We still need to monitor the local level. So we, you know, our gauge that, one of the things that we've been looking at right now has been unemployment rates. On a positive note, in this local area, the last figures that I saw, while it had slightly crept up, we were still well below the state and national average for unemployment in this immediate area. So we are going to continue to monitor that. And that's just something that frankly, we won't have that data prior to June 11th when we need to pass the budget. And frankly, probably wouldn't see the effects of that until late summer, early fall. So, you know, the question that that begs is, okay, what does that mean? So if, if we take the numbers that we are currently at for budgeted expenses and revenue, and we looked at an additional revenue loss of, we'll just put it kind of in the middle there at $1.6 million, that would obviously leave us with a very minimal fund balance. So is there enough in the fund balance to cover that potential risk? Yes, there is. We believe that we would, you know, certainly be able to cover that. Is that a place where we would want to be? Certainly, from a cash flow standpoint, no. But when we start to drop below the $3 million number for the general fund balance, we become, you know, much tighter in the July timeframe when it comes to paying bills. So cash flow is an important factor here that we have to take into consideration. So what would we do? You know, if, if we get to the September, October timeframe and we have realized that there is a significant revenue loss that occurs. And again, I want to emphasize that there is obviously speculation in this and we don't have that data right now. We would have to make some very serious decisions regarding expense reductions at that point in time. And I think it's important for everybody to understand that we would obviously take these conversations very seriously. And we would have to have some difficult conversations about how we would meet the needs of the district. You know, there are a number of areas that we would have to take into consideration because these are areas that would enable us to be able to address a revenue loss as significant as 1.6 to 1.8 million. So we would have to start looking at programs across the district and make some difficult decisions about whether or not programs needed to be suspended in order to meet some of our cost needs. We would have to look at things like wage freeze and course reimbursement freeze. Obviously, those are not popular decisions. But obviously, a loss of 1.6 to 1.8 million dollars in revenue would also be very detrimental to the district. And then finally, headcount reduction. And we would need to look at all areas of the operation. I think the message here is that if we really got ourselves into a situation where we saw a 1.6 to 1.8 million dollar revenue loss, we would need to ensure that no stone was unturned. We would have to look at every element of cost and have that conversation to figure out what the best course forward is. But the reality is, is that we are not at that point right now. And so, you know, as we move forward to June 11th, I think it's important that we all understand that it is not in our best interest to paint the picture that the sky is falling because I think there are some good indicators that we will not get to this point. But I think I would be remiss if I didn't, you know, share with you as a board, some of the things that we need to at least keep in the back of our minds as we move forward. So what are the next steps? As I mentioned, we are continually getting updated budget information. So you know, as we get information from the state, as new data is made available in terms of our local revenue picture, we are regularly adjusting the revenue side of the equation. And certainly if there are any, you know, savings opportunities that, you know, we identify over the next couple of weeks, we will certainly incorporate those into the final budget numbers. Again, we are targeting for a final budget approval on June 11th. So that's what I have for you this evening. I'll certainly be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Shane, if I could just piggyback in on, on something? Okay. I talked a lot in my, my video last night about the threat that I feel cyber charter enrollment poses to us. And that's why I, I'm pleading with parents to please fold off and not make a knee jerk reaction and look at what we're going to have to offer them at the end of, of August in terms of providing a fluid method to move in and out of, of class or in and out of school or keeping your child at home because of a medical, medically compromised family member or child. So I, I can't emphasize enough to everyone that I feel like that's the biggest budgetary threat that we face. Because we may not lose 1.6 million in revenue, in tax money. But if everybody makes an exodus to a for-profit cyber charter school, not T A S D, Fusion C3, we could lose 1.6 million there and be in the same exact place. So I can't emphasize enough, and, and any parent that has questions about how this works, please call me. Because to me, that, that is, that is the threat.
Yeah, Shane and Heather and the administrative team, I think you guys did a fantastic job on looking at all these numbers. And I, I want to echo, at least from my standpoint, what Shane said, there are so many unknowns at this point. And we have projections based on modeling. And hopefully, we are going to go into next year, not missing a beat, providing the top-notch education, all the extracurriculars, everything from soup to nuts. But we also have to be prepared. And I think that's what Shane, you said it very well. This is something that we have to, you know, not ignore and then make last minute decisions. We have to start looking at these things and preparing. And still hopeful that everything financially comes through and we're not going to have a, a, a large deficit into the 1.5 to 2.5 million. But we have to be prepared. I just want to thank you Shane for the presentation. I think you did a great job.
Thank you.
I wanted to throw a few things out there that isn't necessarily for anybody on the board, because you all know this already. But for anybody else who's not as familiar with our budget process and all of you money people, if I'm saying something wrong, please correct me. But I often see people talking about like this mysterious gas lease money. Where is the gas lease money? Where is the gas lease fund? You know, where are all these millions that the school district is sitting on from gas lease money? That is the general fund. It's never been budgeted in. It's not something we budget to spend every year. But there's not some other account that we're just not talking about. Is that, that's a true statement, right?
Correct. That's right.
Yes. Because that comes up very frequently with people who aren't as familiar with the budget process here. The other thing that I've been seeing recently is ideas, the effect of, you know, well, if we had these other buildings, we would be able to do something different with the social distancing, if we had this, if we had that. The only reason the amount of money that's in that general fund now is what it is, is because we don't have those other buildings. Because we consolidated a couple of years ago. We would have been in a much, much more, we would have probably been looking at all of those really hard decisions now in, in May if we had had all these buildings still open all this time. Is that?
I think that's a fair statement. You know, if you look at our operating expenses for things like utilities, for example, there is noticeable trends year on year where you can see that we have had improvements. So I think you're absolutely right that the, the fact that we're going into this with a general fund balance around 4 million in large part is due to the fact that we closed those buildings and we have worked very hard to reduce those operating expenses.
Absolutely. Even if we still own Mill City and Evans Falls, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be looking at using them this fall because we wouldn't be able to afford to. That's, that's more staffing when we are looking at, you know, not replacing people who have retired. So I just, since we have people on watching and listening, I wanted to clarify those couple of things when it comes to the budget. And what Heather said about the cyber, to be crystal clear, I know Heather was clear in her video last night and just now, but parents will have a choice in the fall. You can keep your kid at home with their own device, not sharing with their brother or sister and still be a Toncanic student in the fall. You have that option as a Toncanic resident, as a Toncanic taxpayer, as a Toncanic parent. You don't need to go to a charter, a cyber charter to accomplish that for your family. So.
Can I just say something Holly, as far as the building closure? The fact that we can do what we can do and the fact that we could actually have every kid here, K to five for sure, maybe K to six, every single day, that's just testament that we are now right-sized. We are right-sized now. And there's other districts that can't do what we're going to do. They, they just can't do it.
Do we have a closing date yet Shane?
We do. Actually happens to be June 11th. So that's, that's the same date that we'll have that board meeting. So that evening, I should have good news for everyone. And hopefully at that point, everything will be squared away. So that's the current date that we're targeted.
The one other thing I wanted to bring up was, I've, people have talked about this money that may be coming to us from the federal government, this 400,000-ish. That, that's basically already spent, right? I mean, Heather, you'd given me a number the other day that if we have to provide masks for every kid in the school for the coming school year, it's like, what, 300 and some thousand dollars?
Yes. Yes. And, and that money, Mary Jean wrote that grant this week, actually. And there is money for personal protective equipment in that. And there's also money for the platforms that we're going to be for next year to get the Fusion C3 program running K to 12. And there's money in that for devices because going one-to-one is a huge step for this district and huge cost.
So basically the point is there's no hidden money that we don't know about or we're not telling anybody about. It's all out there. It's all available for you online. And hopefully now it's crystal clear that, you know, we're not sitting on a nest egg.
And the last thing, just to tie up the fund balance discussion. So just so folks who haven't been at these meetings, several years ago, our fund balance was 9.6 million dollars. So that has come down over the past few years. The good news is that stabilized at around this four to $5 million range over the last three years. Again, a testament to the work that was done in the district to try to right-size and, and cut costs along the way. You know, and this sort of scenario is exactly why we need to have somewhere around 10% of our operating budget as essentially you think about that as a savings account to get through the rainy day that we're into this year. What we as a board will have to decide is, is at what level of comfort do we pull the trigger on some of those additional items that Shane and Bill Prabola talked about? Because we're, you know, I'm personally not comfortable with taking that fund balance from four to zero in a single year. We can't do that because we could have another upset the following year. And so we're going to be looking for those savings if, if we need to. Again, hopefully we don't need to go down that road, but the good news is, is the administration board is working on a plan of different asks and, and things like that, that we're going to go after if we did need to pull the trigger. But it's a good thing we have that savings coming into this year because several other districts do not.
And I might note that the budget does not call for a tax increase this year. And I know Elk Lake is, is in the paper yesterday. They're looking for a tax increase up to the limit of the index.
So I appreciate that you brought that up Phil. I mean, it was one of the questions that I wanted to ask. So when we come forward on June 11th, typically we, in the past, couple of years, have had several versions of the budget available for your review so that you can contemplate the implications or impact of various levels of tax increase. So as Christine and I prepare for the meeting on the 11th, I just want to do a check to see if there are any other versions that you want to see as part of that discussion.
I think they should have one, one mill to increase anyway. I mean, we may not want to adopt that.
Sure.
And we may not.
Yep.
But it would be an option to have available to us.
I, I would just want to, Phil, I don't disagree with you. I just want to check and see how much work that is because I think that the board will not have the appetite to raise taxes with the current environment in terms of, of where possible unemployment is and where this virus sort of heads. So if it's not a lot of work, I think we would see that. But I, I, I don't think it's going to get more than one or two votes maximum. So I don't want to waste the administration's time either.
Okay. All right. I will have a separate conversation with Christine and, and we'll discuss.
I'm going to see what that is. Cause if it's just a matter of, you know, you tweak a few cells and
Sure.
and we get that revenue in, then I think it's good because, you know, this is also an environment where we're still going to have inflation over time. And so every year we do a zero mil. You know, we, we just need to be careful about that because over time, you know, we're, we're not going to have the money to, to sort of catch up over time. But I, I, I don't, I don't personally feel the need to see that for this budget cycle.
Neither do I, but I mean, that's whatever the flavor of the board is. Yep.
Okay. Okay. I appreciate the input.
The state for, for the bus drivers has inflation there, but fuel has gone down.
Sure. And you know, and there are a number of factors that they take into consideration in that consumer price index, including operational and maintenance costs and in addition to things such as fuel. So, but I, I definitely understand your perspective.
Okay. Anything else on the, on the budget?
I can ask a couple of things.
Sure.
Well, with Heather saying that we could probably have like the K through five or six kids every day in school, what will that do to our bus operating cost? With, if we still have to continue with social distancing?
Well, there's a, there's a couple of things that we're looking at. We're looking at, first of all, there's a transportation webinar next week. So we'll be tuning into that to see what they think the recommendations might be by, by August and September. So I can't really predict that. I, I also think that there's ways to incentivize and encourage that parents would, would drop their kids off if they can. And so there are things that I'm looking at in terms of scheduling that would allow folks to do that. So I can't answer that question at this time. I, next week I might have a better idea of what they're thinking is appropriate social distancing on a bus. But again, anything could change between now and August. But that's, you know, parents, some parents may not feel comfortable with the bus ride and they may prefer to bring their children to school. We'll just see.
One question. And, and with all the information, the way it's changing daily, we may want to adopt the final budget later in June with, with better information possibly.
That's certainly a possibility. So the, the good news is that June 11th is early enough that we do have some flexibility. What I will tell you is that once the budget is finalized and approved, there is some amount of work that is involved. So my request would be that if we make the decision that we want to do that, that we just leave sufficient time for Christine to be able to do the proper uploads. But I, I, I think there is some flexibility there. I do agree with you. So if we need to call a special session or we make the determination that June 11th is too soon, we have some flexibility.
Okay. One last question. In the bill list, the Chromebooks, was that a budgeted item or is that what we had to do because of this situation that the country's in?
That was, that was money that was in the budget. It was in, half of it was in Joe's budget and the other half, Shane, help me here.
I'm going to have to go back and look at where we moved funds from or, you know, where we appropriated it.
But yes, Bill, that was because we gave out.
Budgeted or if that was just because of the situation we're in?
Well, it was because of the situation we're in and, but it was, it was to replace the, the devices that went out. Now we're asking for those devices back. So we've ordered another 500, there's 500 Chromebooks that, that have been ordered. And then we wrote into the CARES Act to buy some more so we can get up to one-to-one.
Alrighty.
Shane, we have a meeting, I believe, the 25th of June. Does that leave enough time?
Um, you know, I'll take that as a follow-up item and get back to the group.
Okay.
Mary Jean, can you unmute Holly? She can't unmute herself.
Okay. Are we done with the budget? Anybody else? Okay. We'll move on to new business. The visa accounts in your packet for your review. The next item we have is to approve a school board treasurer for another one-year term. So here are any nominations.
Yeah, I nominated John Burke.
A second.
I think we had about four seconds to that.
Oh, you guys are so sweet.
Hashtag no one wants it.
Right, exactly.
A lot of big money, John.
Yes.
Motion to close nominations?
Pause them.
Second?
Second.
Okay. We'll just close them then. We have a roll call on that. Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Ms. Gregory?
Yes.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Cut your own throat.
There you go.
Absolutely.
And myself is a yes as well. You're stuck again, John. Okay. The third item of the business and last item of the business, looking for a resolution to approve a real estate appraisal on the Walmart property as regarding their assessment.
That's correct. So during the last board meeting, we had a brief discussion about Walmart's property tax appeal. We feel that the next best step for us to take as a district is to engage in our own appraisal. So the information that is provided there is the appraisal service as well as their fee. And we feel like gathering our own data relative to the value of that property would be the next best step.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
So at this time, this is the district saying that they would go forward with that. So I would certainly be willing to follow up with our representation and see if he wants to discuss with Mr. Litwin their involvement.
And how about the township as well?
Yeah, because county and municipalities are also involved in this.
That's correct.
Litwin represents both.
Correct. So when I talk to Justin, I'll have him follow up with Paul.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll do roll call. Ms. Arnold?
Yes.
Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Ms. Gregory?
Yes.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Wiedner?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Okay, that's the end of the new business. Are there any public comments on anything else? And again, just put your name in the chat box.
I have a question. When would we be looking at going back to public meetings? When we turn green, like in person?
I think we need to put as soon as possible.
That would be nice.
I think it would look for the board to be there as a group to do this.
I mean, certainly, there was some speculation that around, you know, early June, maybe next two weeks, that perhaps we might be going green.
Is that the metric we're looking for, as like the move back to in-person meetings is green?
I would think we could. Let's look at what the restrictions are as to how we conduct those meetings. This is wise. I mean, we could still spread out if we need to. And probably set up seating for visitors in a spread out manner.
Well, you could still, a Zoom meeting under, under yellow, because you could have up to 25 people, like the board and administration there, and still let the visitors in on Zoom.
That's true. That's true.
I mean, we could spread out so we're socially distancing there in the group.
I know the administration has got a full plate on their hands as to many other items they're dealing with. Perhaps they could look at that, I wouldn't make that as higher priority as other items, though. I mean, we could.
Phil, if I may, I think we're going to get some more information probably within the next two weeks, and I think we have to look at the restrictions. So, Bill, I understand what you're saying, and I agree, getting back in person is absolutely the way to go. I just think that there's still too many restrictions, even if it's 25 people, and then part Zoom, part live might be very difficult. I think the easier thing is if we just wait another couple of weeks, once we go green and we get the go-ahead, we can just do them physically, even if we had them in the auditorium and we spread people out. That might be a good option.
And if we need to, we could do a Zoom meeting, you know, even when we're in green for a little bit till some things settle down. But I think once we get to green, then we're looking to transition then, certainly to in-person meetings. Given restrictions that we might, will have to abide by. Anybody else?
Yeah, I think, I think we're talking about being in the green at the end of June anyway, so I'd prefer to continue as such for the first meeting in June, get everything clarified, and then hopefully, in the green, we can resume what Bill said, do something in person, maybe in the auditorium.
Yeah. Are there any questions, anybody in the chat that have a question?
There are. So, Phil, there's two comments in here from Amy. She just wanted to say thank you for handling things so well during the pandemic. We have another one from Terry. The board has done an amazing job conducting meeting on Zoom. And we have Ms. Jigalala, who would like to read a short email. And I'm going to unmute him.
Thank you, Mary Jean. I really appreciate that. I just wanted to share with the Board of Education an email that I sent to Superintendent McPherson. I have never formally met Superintendent McPherson, but after my wife and I and my family, my two daughters who are in the district, after seeing and reviewing her video, I did it alone this morning, and then I went ahead and shared it with my wife a second time, and I emailed her, and I just wanted the board to hear what I shared with her, because we are truly in awe. My wife and I, being both educators, are truly in awe, and I've always been proud for many years, living in the district, having our daughters in the district, being serviced by just incredible teachers year in and year out. This was almost like the icing on the cake, though, with Heather's video. And quickly, I'll read it. Dear Superintendent McPherson, I included my sister-in-law, Dr. Jill Murray, president-elect of Lackawanna College, because she too is a woman of extraordinary ability when it comes to true, to providing true leadership, especially during tough times. My wife Suzanne Suze, who you know is another woman who I learned so much from when it comes to leading individuals and groups of diverse people. I will be sharing your video with Jill, because she and I, along with my wife, collaborate regularly regarding public education and the importance that effective leadership plays and how it's critical in leading any organization successfully. Moreover, I'm very fortunate to be surrounded by such strong and intelligent women who helped me provide the best leadership possible to my staff, and Jill and Suzanne truly appreciate when these types of things are shared with them, from one strong leader to another. So Heather, as I said to you in the email, I watched your video once again with my wife and our two daughters. Just like a movie, one gains more insight and understanding the second time around, and you are to be commended for your leadership, transparency, and commitment to your staff, students, and families you serve. I have learned so much from you in such a short period of time of a 26-minute to 43-second video than I have in grad school throughout a whole semester. I'm truly awe of your approach as an educational leader during these challenging times. Be well, fondly proud parents of T A S D, Bobby Suze, Olivia Rosie Galella. So thank you once again. Very, very proud.
Thank you, Bobby. Thank you. Your email meant a lot to me. I had, I had a call from you, and I had an email from you, and I really do appreciate that. And all the rest of the community members and parents who also reached out to me, I really do appreciate it. And we will continue to do our very, very best. That is what we're all committed to. We have the team to do it. The T A S D family is here, and we're strong, and we're motivated, and I have never seen teachers collaborate like I've seen in the last three weeks, and they're awesome. They're, they're going to do this.
Much credit is deserved by both Heather, the administration team, the teachers, and the support staff members. They've all done a great job.
And the related services people. I've got a lot of compliments on the teletherapy that they're doing and what that means to families and kids. So those guys also are doing a really great job. I include them when I talk about teachers.
Well, we appreciate your efforts, everyone's efforts. We're very lucky. Anybody else have any comments?
Phil, there's one last one. Nicole M. just put a comment in. Thank you to all the teachers, administrators, and the board for everything they have done. This was not an easy situation, and applaud you on everything. T A S D, proud. That was the last one.
Thanks, too. Very kind, very kind indeed. Okay, if that's the last one, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Hold on, Phil. I have to make a correction on a vote I did. Business and Finance, number four.
Okay.
I need to abstain on that one.
Okay, abstain. Number four. Okay. Thank you, Lori. We'll make sure that's in the record.
Phil?
Yes, Bill?
Hey, on the visa count, can we update, PJ's gone, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. The visa count still has related to his name.
We've put in that request. It's just not a fast process. So we have put in that request.
All righty. Just wondered why his name was still there.
Yeah, I'll double-check that with Christine, but I believe that was something that she and I had talked about a few months ago, and we had moved to make that request. So I'll just double-check that with her tomorrow. Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Thank you.
You bet.
Something take a while. Why, the first is Nicholson. We had mail coming in the name of people that have been gone for 30 years. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Thank you. We are adjourned.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.